Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We would like to get started. I'd like to call on Mr. Barbara Henderson to open us up with a word of prayer.
Good evening, everybody. Can we just stand for a word of prayer, please? Our Father in heaven, thank you so much for an opportunity to come together to discuss issues that affect us all. Please send your Holy Spirit now to be with us, and please, I pray, that everything that we do be done to your name's honor and glory, for Jesus' sake. Amen.
Thank you. I'm pleased that you all came out tonight. I think you'll be very impressed with the presentation. I've had the opportunity to look at the drawings a couple of weeks ago and to see the dry run this afternoon. I think you will be impressed. I'd like to now call on the Honorable Hubert Minus, Minister of Health and MP for the Kalani constituency, in which we're at Saunders Beach, to come and bring some welcome remarks.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much, Mr. Moderator, colleague ministers at the head table, executive members of Ministry of Works and Ministry of Environment, ladies and gentlemen, and of course constituents. I'm more than happy to see you out this evening, and I think we should be thankful to both the Ministry of Works and Ministry of Environment to have such a function to inform us about the changes that would take place at Saunders Beach, the beautification, enhancement of safety, et cetera, and to explain to us all of the false information that was given a year ago, that truly falls behind us, and what we will see is Bahamas not beachkeeping, I want to say first world country, but even better than first world country, because we look at our beaches without America, they're first world, so I don't know if you call us half world, but our beach would definitely be up there. So again, while you're here, feel free to ask ministry any questions, concerns you may have, and make sure that our beach remains as is, and we maintain both safety and security within the environment. And again, thank you very much for coming tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have rated number one beaches in the world, eh? Now to come to the podium to bring remarks will be the Honorable Nico Brandt, Minister of Public Works and Transport, and he will be followed by the Minister of the Environment, the Honorable Earl Devoe.
Thank you so much, Mr. Higgs. I should like to join in with my colleague in welcoming all of you here this evening with two of my colleague ministers, Devoe and Minus, senior government officials, distinguished residents, and others. Pleasant good evening to you. A component of the, oh, plague, I'm sorry, of the Free National Movement's Manifesto 07 relates to parks and green open spaces. This, in fact, is a program of expansion and upgrade of neighborhood parks, recreational and open green spaces, seaside parks, picnic areas around New Providence, including, among others, the Morocque foreshore that we will deal with tomorrow evening, if I was willing, and an improved access to safe parking and recreational facilities at Saunders Beach. You would be aware that the landscaping is substantially completed, and a public bus lay-by is currently being installed. An additional parking facility to the south of West Bay Street is being actively pursued. The government has moved on the next phase of this project, which is the expansion and reclamation of Saunders Beach through construction of the series of whale tail grines to create sand cells that will be backfilled with sand. The replamous beach will extend from the western end to the east just before Ferguson Road. There will be minimum excavation of the rocky shorelines along the eastern foreshore to facilitate the beach replamishment. The project will be done in phases to permit public access and the use of the sections of the beach during the construction period. Public safety and security procedures will be in place during the improved works. When completed, Saunders Beach recreational area will be a seaside park and picnic area that we all can be very, very proud of, providing recreation and fun for the Bahamians as well as visitors to our shores. Ladies and gentlemen, again, I wish to welcome all of you here, and I will leave the environmental and technical aspect of this project to persons who are immensely qualified to do so. It is therefore now my pleasure to invite the Minister of Environment to the podium.
Thank you, Brother Nico. P.S. With your permission, I'd like to acknowledge with thanks the presence of some people who you all would be interested in knowing. Permanent Secretary Leibn, Director Philip Wiesch, Director Melanie McKinsey, Assistant Director Dwayne Curtis, Environmental Officer Brian, and Lorraine Cox, engineer. These people will help maintain what we are proposing to build for you, as well we have in the audience the Executive Director of the Bahamas National Trust and the Country Director for the Northern Region of the Nature Conservancy, Eleanor Phillips. I'm very pleased to join my colleagues on this historical occasion. Saunders Beach and Morocque are among two of the most popular traditional beaches for Bahamians on New Providence. Saunders Beach has been described by some as the poor man's cabbage beach, but I say cabbage beach, which it looks as good. The Saunders Beach Reclamation and Restoration Program, which you see today, is a significant part of the New Providence infrastructural rehabilitation and roadworks. Together, Saunders Beach and Big Pond represent the centerpieces of environmental and social mitigation for that infrastructural rehabilitation program. The public is aware that Saunders Beach is being transformed into a beautiful seaside recreational park. In the near term, Saunders Beach is in store for significantly more expansion. The government in its manifesto 07, as you've learned, promised to create more public open spaces for growing numbers of Bahamian citizens to enjoy the waters of the Bahamas and distance of the sea. Ladies and gentlemen, I fully support the right Honorable Prime Minister in his recently expressed disagreement with the view that the restroom facilities at Saunders Beach are too expensive and perhaps too good for Bahamian beachgoers, because a toilet is a toilet. I am proud to be a part of a government determined to provide Bahamians with recreational facilities of a standard deserved and indeed expected at this stage of our development. Since the restoration commenced, especially on weekends and holidays, people marvel at the changes in the widespread use of this beach by residents and tourists alike. The planned restoration will improve the existing conditions of this popular beach by greatly expanding its limited space, and I take this opportunity to remind users of the beach that it is being improved for their use. The increased littering, gridding on the grass, and parking on the curb will destroy what be a built for public use and enjoyment. So I urge you, use it wisely, keep it clean, and treat it as the property for the next generation. The public is aware that the western end of the beach appears to be enjoying significant accretion following the year's usual winter storm erosion. However, just as the area east of the new roundabout remains a bare iron shore, this iron shore portion, while offering protection, does little to offer comfort. Accordingly, the proposed expansion will add additional beach area at high tide of approximately three and a half acres. The coastal engineer, who you will hear from soon, is responsible for very successful restoration and stabilization at Sandals and elsewhere, and he has prepared the working drawings for the expansion of Saunders Beach. The beach area will be increased from 1.5 acres to five acres. The sanded beach capacity will increase six fourths to accommodate beachgoers from the current western end as far east as the Reno Clinic. Using the standard unit of 50 to 75 square feet, which is the size of a typical bathroom or office per user, for a typical urban beach, the carrying capacity of this beach will increase from about 1,300 to more than 2,900. If we use New York standard, which is roughly a closet, then the capacity of this beach could accommodate 6,000. Shade trees will be planted together with sea oats and native scowola along the length of the dome, as well a sand fence will be installed to collect the normal drift. Saunders Beach restoration and expansion will have negligible adverse environmental impact on the marine environment and will greatly enhance and complement the upland environment. In fact, the storm surge usually experienced will be mitigated, the drainage system is enhanced, and it's likely that more attractive snorkeling will result from the protection of the boulders used to create the whale tails. I acknowledge with thanks the work of the Best Commission, Mr. Neil Sealy, and the very helpful guidance of Mr. Richard Watkins in conceptualizing the environmental oversight which underpins this important work. We anticipate more vehicular traffic as a result of this restoration on the eastern end, and I urge motorists to exercise caution as beachgoers cross the street. On a personal note, Saunders Beach has always been close to me. My brothers and I used this beach to do our wind sprints while training for track and field many years ago. It is a place where our friends and us roasted hot dogs and marshmallows and camped overnight. A little further east is the Western Espinar. We knew it then as Long Wharf. It was for us a place of refreshing after hard country workout on the nearby hills of Fort Charlotte. And through this government, I am very pleased to be able to assist in passing on to this group of Bahamians and enhance unique beach experience. Restoring and improving these outdoor areas is a natural and logical sequence to our growth and development, and I commend it to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ministers Grant and Devoe. On the way here, I passed by Saunders Beach from the Ministry of Works, and I noticed that the parking lot was almost half full, and a number of parents and a large number of children were in the playground equipment. So the area is used quite a lot by local residents and occasionally by cruise visitors that rent scooters and travel along West Bay Street. This improvement will make a large difference to that recreational area. Now we're going to bring on Dr. Kevin Bodge of Olson Associates to do the presentation. Olson Associates are based in Jacksonville. They're a coastal engineering firm, and they've done a considerable amount of work here in the Bahamas, some of which he will show you in the PowerPoint presentation. After the presentation, we will go into questions and answers, and as Dr. Devoe, Minister Devoe, he introduced his team. His team are here to answer any questions that you may have that are not related to the engineering and structure of the redeveloped Saunders Beach that may be related to the environment or to any health concerns you may have. And of course, the ministers are here to answer any questions that you may have of a policy nature. So I'd like to invite the ministers to come and sit in the front so they get a good view of the presentation, and Dr. Bodge to come and give us the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm Dr. Kevin Bodge with Olson Associates, Coastal Engineer, and I've had the pleasure of being able to do a lot of design work along the Bahamian coastline for about the past 22 years now, developing a lot of beach, beaches and beach management programs for clients as diverse as Wallop Paradise Island, as a coastal engineering consultant for Curzon International in Atlantis, recently for Sandals, Bay Rock, numerous assignments throughout Old Fort Bay, Life for Key, and throughout the family islands as well. So it's a great pleasure for me to be able to give back some of these talents towards public beach improvements, which I've wanted to do for many, many years. I want to give you a quick overview of the technical aspects of the proposed project. The Saunders Beach area of which we're speaking is, of course, here in the Lee to west of Arrowhead Key. Here in this recent satellite photograph, you see the new expansion of Arrowhead Key. You know, when I got downloaded the satellite image, I actually thought that this was like a mistake or some sort of weird dropout photo. It's such a perfect square, but that's indeed how it was constructed. The Saunders Beach area, again, shown here. The project improvements incorporate, excuse me, about 2,200 feet of shorefront from just east of the Kentucky Fried Chicken there, westward of the Shell Station, and there's the new parking area and roundabout. Now, as was mentioned, and as you know, the central part of Saunders Beach has a quite nice beach, but other parts of it, not quite as much. On the western end, near the new restrooms, you see the beach here at low tide is relatively narrow, and then east of the central part toward the two concrete jetties, the beach begins to narrow some more, and then further east of those jetties, the beach becomes mainly just iron shore with very little sand beach, and then further east at the east end, the beach pretty much disappears sandwise in front of around the Kentucky Fried Chicken restaurant, such that there's no beach at all on the far eastern end. So again, in plan view, looks sort of like this. There's Bay Street and the new roundabout and the parking area. The existing mean high tide shoreline, if you can see that in yellow, is along here. This is mainly sand, and then past the jetties, this is basically iron shore in that area as well. The proposed plan of improvements looks like this. A series of rock grines would be used to hold the sand fill, which is placed in the Lee. The new high tide shoreline is shown here by the brighter shading color, and the low tide beach, again, by the darker shaded color. The two concrete jetties or keys that are out there, the west one would be removed, that's an old storm drain, and the eastern one, which still has a storm drain in it, would be retained in its present shape, but it would form the stem of the new teahed groin or fishtail groin on its end. The existing shoreline, high tide shoreline I showed you before, is back here, and you can see that the new proposed beach represents a fairly substantial expansion of it, including along the entire eastern portion of Saunders Beach, about a 65-foot advance of the high tide beach on average. Let's look at that now in section view, that is, what it looks like sort of on the ground. Let's take a slice through the western end of the beach near the new public restrooms. The existing beach is shown here, again, in section view. This is the seawall back here, and that's the profile of the existing beach. There's some rock in that area, rock outcrops. Here's the low tide level and the high tide level, and the proposed beach improvements would look like this, with sand fill out here, creating about an 80-foot wide beach at high tide, which is about a 50 or 60-foot expansion beyond the existing beach here, and covering the existing rock. There is a little outcrop right there that might still poke its head out, but the design is basically to give a smooth sand beach along the entire shoreline. This picture, by the way, is distorted. The vertical scale has been exaggerated two times. That is, this vertical scale is twice that of the horizontal, so I could fit it all on the slide. That's why this representative guy for scale is so skinny. If we take another slice through the beach, this is the middle part of the beach just near the Shell Station, where the beach normally is quite wide. You see the existing beach here with the high tide and low tide shorelines. The project beach would expand it to about 110 feet width at this location at high tide, which is about a 60 or 70-foot expansion of the existing beach. Here, where the shoreline is mostly iron shore, the existing beach looks like this. Here's the seawall, and then there's a little bit of sand back here, and then this is iron shore extending down into the sea, the low tide level and the high tide level. The project beach would create a sand beach across that entire way extending down to below the low tide line, to two or three feet depth at low tide, again, creating about an 85-foot wide beach at the high tide level. So a beach that's almost as wide here on the east end of the beach as the existing beach is now in the middle near the new parking area. The best way to give you an idea of how this looks and feels is to use some examples that are close to home here on New Providence Island. This is an illustration from Sandals World Bahamian on West Cable Beach, and I like this example because the general morphology, that is, the shape and conditions of the shoreline along Sandals are very, very similar to those of Saunders. In the pre-project condition along the main hotel beach, again, really all iron shore, no sand beach, and in the post-project construction, same general photograph area, you see the sand beach, which was created so that the iron shore rock has been covered up. Another example is from Sandals on the offshore key at Blackbird's Key. You see the pre-project condition, old rock groin here near the arrivals dock, and after we were finished by relocating and expanding the groin somewhat, reorienting it to a proper position, and placing sand in the Lee, you see the resulting effect here. In a more energetic environment, this is Salt Key for dolphin encounters, the north side of the island, so it has really high wave energy out there, and the pre- project condition located, noticed here, and this is what it looked like with the addition of a groin on this side and one on this side, sand fill was added. This outcrop of rocks here were actually pre-existing, we just chose not to bury them. Best way to visualize the rock grines that are proposed is, again, through some prototype examples, such as this terminal groin at the Xanadu property on the western end of Old Fort Bay, and this teahed groin or fishtail groin located on Blackbird's Key for Sandals on the north shore. All right. How does all this work? Well, I like this photograph here, this aerial photograph, because it shows some pretty typical strong northeast swell coming into the Nassau Harbor area. You see those big waves and breaking across the harbor entrance. The project area is down here. Waves diffract through the opening in these islands, and the resulting pattern is a push of water and waves and energy from west to east along the west side of Saunders Beach, and from east to west along the eastern side of Saunders Beach. Zoom in on that a little bit. The action of both is to move sand along the shoreline from right to left, and from left to right here, depositing sand in the middle part of the beach. That's why the existing beach is always the best in the middle of Saunders there by the new roundabout parking area, because sand is pushed into that area, but also because, of course, that's the deepest part of the embayment. If we were to just place sand here without any stabilization, it wouldn't stay, not where we want it. It would all end up pretty much in the middle part of the beach, and some of it would escape off to both sides. In designing these projects, then, we look not only at the waves and the currents and the diffraction patterns, but also look at the variation in the tides, such as shown here for Nassau. For this calendar year, we have our lowest tides in the midwinter and our highest tides in the early fall. All of these are accounted for in the project design and the elevations of the beaches and the structures. The structures themselves are not trivially placed out there. The geometry of the beach created by such teahed or fishtail structures is a complicated function of an awful lot of math, which I won't bore you with anymore. Because we'll be adding sand to the system, and it's subject to prevailing winds and waves coming from to the western part of the harbor, sand fencing and vegetation is recommended and proposed along the back part of the shoreline. You see that through these little hash marks along the back of the beach, which aren't quite drawn to scale. This fencing and vegetation, again, will help minimize or mitigate the amount of sand which is blown from the beach onto the sidewalk and potentially onto West Bay Street. Give you some examples of what that looks like at Florida locations. These are wood picket fences, which are spaced or non-continuous, so you walk between them, that is, the fencing doesn't preclude you from walking onto the beach, as you can see here. And over time, on a natural condition, this is an energetic shoreline around Cocoa Beach, they populate with sea oats and other vegetation, become actually buried more or less. In the present case, what we would do is install the fence, place, install vegetation around them, much like the example shown here on the back beach of the Cove, Pirate's Cove at Phase 3 Atlantis, where in order to stop the wind-blown sand from reaching the deck, we placed vegetation along the back shore, and you'd even see some sand fence right there, kind of buried by the sea grape and sea oats in that area, to keep the elevation of this low so that you can see over the top of it, both as you walk upon, along the beach and you drive in vehicle along West Bay Street as well. Some quick facts about the project. Mr. Devoe already mentioned that the project as proposed would increase the recreational beach area by about three and a half acres at high tide, that is, where its present value of about 1.5 acres increased to five acres. About a four and a half acre increase in recreational space at low tide, about a 65-foot increase in the beach on average. The sand fill would be of beach quality, that is, what's placed, it would be basically indistinguishable from the sand which exists at Saunders now. I anticipate that construction of this project would take on the order of about 90 to 120 days, but the construction would be managed and phased such that one cell or one area would be worked at a time, so that basically at least one part or more parts of the beach would always be open for recreation at any given time. There might be some interruptions here and there for passing construction traffic to get through, but the idea is to minimize disruptions to the recreational use of the beach during construction. Water quality and adjacent beaches would not be affected. There are very few adjacent sandy beaches to this area, and water quality has not been recognized as a particular problem or issue along this shoreline. The question that I get asked the most is, will the beach last? Well, the best answer I have for that is based on our experience. Certainly, I can say that we've applied the best state-of-the-art coastal engineering knowledge to the development of the project shorefront, a lot of that theory that I've developed myself over the last couple of decades, and we now have about 20-some years of experience in developing very, very similar projects in similar environments. Our earliest such project I designed was in Fisher Island in Florida, that's just south of Miami Beach. We built this project in 1991. It was the first time we used this technology of teahed grines in the southeastern United States. There wasn't any beach here at all to begin with, and you see, again, the teahed grines or fishtail grines there and placement of sand along the back shore. In the 20 years since this project was constructed, it has never required renourishment, and it's weathered a number of storms. We had a couple of rock boulders to be repaired after Hurricane Andrew, but that's the only maintenance which has occurred to date. Interestingly also, this is the only beach in the United States that's built of Bahamian sand. The sand on Fisher Island was imported from Ocean Key in 1991. I can't resist telling this story. I was telling Minister Devoe about this earlier. When we imported the sand for this project from the Bahamas in 1991, early 90s, okay? Think about what was going on back in then. I bring in gleaming white powder into Miami on 3,000 cubic yard barge loads, and I had to clear customs. The custom guy looks at me like, dude, you've got to be kidding. Another example of, oh, and I should say too, shortly after that, we began doing similar projects in New Providence Island, including our earliest projects in Life for Key, which date to around 1992, 93, and many projects thereafter. In the 15 to 20 years since we've built all those projects, again, none of them have ever required any restoration. There's been some boulder touch-ups and other things needed to be done after Hurricane Floyd, like at Bay Rock, for example, but for the most part, they've held up much, much better than we ever originally dreamed. Another example of the robustness of the design is shown, again, through the Sandals project at Royal Bahamian, thanks to James Molson for courtesy of this photograph. This is, the bottom picture illustrates the construction of the beach, or the presence of the beach, six months after we placed the grines and the sand fill. 18 months later, it looks like this. The beach actually accreted a lot, in fact, all the way up to the grines, and the beach is actually accreted on the other side and in the distance as well. Now, this beach kind of comes and goes, back and forth, but for the most part, there's more sand there now than when we placed. I can't say that will definitely happen at Saunders, although, that said, the morphology of Saunders is such that it probably will tend to pick up sand, would be my speculation. But anyways, for all these reasons, I feel fairly confident that we have a good chance for this project to succeed in the long term. Routine maintenance, however, of course, will be required, litter removal, you know, and the usual activities that are required to maintain a public beach, and, as I mentioned, some sand renourishment should be expected, and perhaps some repair of the rock grines after particularly severe storms. and perhaps some repair of the rock groins after particularly severe storms. No rational engineer can tell you that they can design against the ravages of something like Hurricane Floyd or whatever. At the end of the day, God has the last say. And as I mentioned, even despite the placement of the sand fencing and the vegetation, some wind-blown sand and overwash of sand onto the sidewalk in West Bay Street can and should still be expected. Again, it's a fierce ocean out there. A lot of people ask me too, what about sea level rise? How will that affect the project and project design? Well, sea level has been rising for the last, about the time that we have records. It's risen about one foot over the last 120 years. We fully expect that rate of sea level rise to increase. Speculation as to whether that rate of sea level rise will accelerate in the next century is just not certain. You put seven climatologists in the room, you'll get 10 different answers as to what the rate of sea level rise will be. Even if we were to design for the minimum expected sea level rise of about a half a foot over the next 60 years, to accommodate that, I would have to increase the elevation of the structures in the beach by, you know, half a foot to a foot or more, which would make them higher, actually, than the seawall. So that wouldn't do us any good. I'd have to raise a whole seawall parking lot and the entire island. The bottom line is, the design itself should be robust enough to handle sea level rise in our foreseeable future. Finally, how would the beach change? Well, on that central part of Saunders Beach, which we're used to recreating at now, it wouldn't. It would be wider. You would enter the sea in the same way you have before. You'd just be entering it 40, 50, 60 feet further from the seawall. The biggest difference would be, the beach would be widened in the same way to the far west in front of the new restrooms and all the way along the east, to the east of the concrete jetty. So it would be a very expansive, almost half-mile-long beach of the same relative quality that you have now in the middle part of the island. And with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Harris.
Thank you very much, Dr. Bodge. Don't sit too far away. Sit here, you may be coming to the mic. Okay, we'll now open up to questions and answers. Start on this side. Any new questions? Mr. Moscow, come to the mic, please. Don't be shy.
With the landscaping package going up and down the beach, I think there should be like a 30-foot easement to bring trucks and clean up in and out of the beach. Because you've got, you need some kind of ramp maybe central so you can access the beach in a central road each way. So that might be something to look at, so you don't destroy the landscape and have something to visit you there.
Taking notes, questions? I can't believe we got no questions. Mr. Cole.
Just a couple of people have mentioned to me that they've been by Saunders Beach, particularly on holidays, and is now on the park. I think you need to expand on the south side. I hear that you're going to do that. But if you're expanding the beach to this extent, I think you may have to do it up on the new road guy, the six-legged monster. It's going to run out of space for cars and people to walk to the beach and stuff like that.
It is so interesting, you know. Thank you for your observation. I was just saying it was so interesting. Prior to the development, I think you might have had 20 cars parked along the side of the road. At present, we have some 70 parking slots in the new parking lot. And as I indicated during my brief presentation, we are pursuing other opportunities or the availability for parking. We appreciate that. With the improvements we will make, the beach goes will substantially increase. And so we've got that mindset.
Mr. Carey?
The Po'awatra resident, I'm adopted in Miami Beach, not as a BMT, nothing. I have other BMT people there. But I'm looking at the, Po'awatra has a flooding problem, as many of you know. So I'm looking very with great interest at, you know, the design of the drainage. I mean, a couple of years ago, when we put in the, we put in the Big Lake, there was supposed to be another phase which would have put in a greater capacity to, for water to exit, you know, which is really the entire lower Chipping Arm area and Po'awatra, et cetera. And I see that there will be some retention of the existing capacity of drainage through that groin there. If your project is successful, as has been in many places, then there's a potential for the front of that groin to be covered by sand accretion. If you're more successful than you expect and as successful as you have been in other places, then how would you mitigate in design against that culvert being blocked? And I would recommend that as construction is being considered and designed on that groin, that even though the government hasn't indicated recently any intention to increase the capacity of the flow out under the road, if that would be designed for a potential future such activity, so that if government wants to put in a 10-foot exit later on, that the culvert there, the groin there, which you have there, would be able to support such outflow. Are you all going to discuss Arawaki or not? It's just that I get a lot, sorry, I'm not a hat. I get a lot of calls asking for whether there's going to be any consideration for access, recreational access for fishermen. A lot of people are asking whether there's any, so there won't be.
We're not dealing with that.
I said, I put it on the record publicly, and I think it should be considered. A lot of people are looking for places like that. There is a lot of space there now. And before it gets allocated, if anyone making a decision is in the room, if you would consider that a part of it may be left available for people to just throw a line out or rod in the future. Thank you.
To briefly address the question about the storm drain, it's a very good question. The issue here is, again, the drain through this existing jetty, which we would propose to be extended and then the outlet of which would be at the seaward end of that groin there. We've done this, tackled this problem in similar projects in the U.S. And this, again, there's never any guarantee with the ocean. What we normally do is we move the inlet, the invert, up from the seabed as high as we can. And we protect it either with a grating, so that nobody gets into the pipes, or we put it back behind the rocks. We also put usually a clean-out facility at one or two locations along that area so that it can be cleaned out as well. I'd have to get with Public Works to find out the flow issues with such a pipe. There are ways to put the expanding rubber flap gates on the end of such outlets. But you'd need a pretty high flow to crack those. And I have a feeling you may not get it here. But it's an issue that we mark down and will address in the final documents there.
Any other questions? I know there's some fishing along the rock shoreline at Saunders Beach. Those fishermen will have to go up under the groins. Any other questions? Any last comments from the table, Dr. Bodge?
My only concern, I'm sure most residents would agree with me. I'm a fisherman. I would be very reluctant to allow fishing in this type of beach facility. Because once you start fishing, the next thing you do is cleaning fish. The next thing, sharks are attracted. And then the next thing is somebody is injured in a beach environment. So I personally would not encourage that. I don't know how the residents feel.
It's already existing, but it's already there. I mean, if you, then I would argue. Right now, a lot of people do actually use that area for fishing and for cleaning fish. So that you would actually be, that would be a policy change to take away something that's already existing. So that's...
But if you remember correctly, when we first came in in '07, I think in '08, I had objected and we had a sign there initially to stop that. And then somehow, it was subsequently removed, and then they started. So it's just a matter of enforcement. But they knew before that a sign was there prohibiting beachgoers or fishermen from cleaning fish or fishing in the area. In '08, the sign subsequently disappeared, and they came back. So it's just a matter of enforcement.
I'd like to see a photo of that. I agree with Dr. Minnis 100%. I think the last thing Kalani needs is a fishing ramp on Saunders Beach.
All right, no one's suggesting, for the record, for the record, for the record, before you all think I'm stupid. I have not suggested a fishing ramp. The suggestion was, and I responded to the minister saying that he wouldn't encourage it. The only thing I said was, sir, is that it currently exists. I live in Po'awatra, I walk there every day. It currently exists. That's the only thing I said. I take the minister's point that there was a policy change. But Eric Carey is not recommending a fishing ramp be put in. My recommendation was, and the minister said, they're not dealing with it, is that for Arawaki, rather than it all go commercial, for wealthy people to reap benefits, is that for the average people, we consider designated a part of the area, an area where someone could go throw the line. So that's the difference. That's Arawaki, not Saunders Beach.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. Headline tomorrow in Tribune. National Trust director promotes fishing ramp on Saunders Beach.
I agree with you, Mr. Carey, very, very much, everything you said. What I don't agree with is allowing people to fish. As Dr. Minnis says, you start pulling fish, and it's now a beach. You're going to have sharks, perhaps, or barracudas chasing fish in. You're going to have bleeding fish, whatever, at the beach. And I don't think that's the right scene. West of that, Saunders Beach, going out towards Goslope Bend, Brands Point, you have rocks, and there are a lot of fishermen there fishing. They are pure rocks. Totally different scenario. But I take your point.
Thank you, Mr. DeVeau.
Thank you, PS. I just wanted to share some concerns that came to us subsequent to the announcement of the town meeting and to highlight how we propose to address them. For example, since the beach experience was expanded, there's been an increase selling of food. And so we will post signs, and the Department of Environmental Health will extend its monitoring to prohibit the selling of food and liquor. We've seen increased littering at the beach, which requires us, particularly at the last weekend, to increase and expand the litter pickup. We will respond in two ways, and we invite you to help us. Public education is going to be important to get Bahamians used to the idea that if you take a Kentucky buck to the beach, it's your duty to take it home. But we will do our part to ensure that the beach is clean. But we also must get the public buy-in to keep the beach clean. Otherwise, you then get rodents, flies, and other issues. The, there's a proposal and a suggestion for a lifeguard system. We have a significant challenge in our society putting together a team of Royal Bahamas Defense Force officers, Royal Bahamas Police Force officers, immigration officers, and custom officers who meet the minimum standards. A lifeguard is going to be one of those. We would love to have lifeguards, but we're not going to have a muscle hunk on the beach and pretend that he's a lifeguard. The person has to be functionally capable of being a lifeguard to serve the purpose that the people intend. We have issues of noise pollution, which will mean that residents and users will have to be sufficiently strong to call the police and invite the police in and nurture the police in your sensibilities. We want to promote family experience at these beaches. And we would have designated places where people who need to make loud noise could be accommodated. But if a family is at Saunders Beach, we don't want a lot of cursing and drinking and fighting. We'd like the kids to see a different example. Sorry to make this preachy, but these are things that we must encourage and put on the record so that you understand the kind of standards we propose to put. And we will begin this by posting signs. You'll see sign, no fishing. Children's play area, no littering. Remove your litter. No parking, no cooking on the grass. If you went there yesterday, there were 10 grills on this newly planted grass, hot jar of coal and grease killing the grass. So we will find a place to accommodate grilling so that it falls on concrete. But at the end of the day, well, let's start with us. Let us not litter, let us not curse, let us not use dope, let us not curse, and then we'll encourage others to be like us.
Thank you, Mr. DeVeau. I think that's a good point, and it's a good one. I think just to brief, you know, we're talking about Saunders Beach tonight and improvement and redevelopment of Saunders Beach. Tomorrow night, we're talking about improvement and replenishment of the Montague Beach. But those are only two of many, many sites on New Providence that are in the pipeline for redevelopment and development as parks. Just east of Ferguson Road, we have that wide-open green space that is on the, you know, it's in the pipeline to be developed. We have, in the heads of agreement with Albany, replenishment of the beach in southwest Nassau and public access to that beach. So you'll be hearing more about this as they come to the forefront.
One suggestion, sir, let me put the no littering signs up. I would suggest we make it a no-bottle zone. It's a beach, bottles break, get in the sand, cut people's foot, whatever. So my suggestion, please, to make it a no-bottle zone.
Wonderful. We just reduce the duty and buy the grateful cup.
Thank you very much for coming out. I hope you enjoyed the presentation and see it as a positive program for not only the Kalani constituency, because it's just not the constituents of Kalani that use Saunders Beach, but for the entire island of Providence and those that visit our shores from all the seas. Thank you very much, have a very good night.